For the Fledge of Allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which contains one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for coming this evening. I just had a couple of comments that I wanted to make and then we'll move on. I noticed in some of the staff reports, administration reports, I can't remember who it was, maybe it was Sandra who was saying, she was so surprised that we kind of got here we are at the end of the year. And I thought it might be nice, considering the fact that we have two long-term administrators who are retiring this year, if for the next administrator's report, if maybe in their report administrators could reflect on the year, what's transpired over the year, and talk about, as a district or as a school, for each of your individual schools, talk about where are we strong and where do we need work? What grade levels within your school are clicking on all cylinders? And where do we need some improvement? And for those administrators, and I don't see you out there tonight, and that would be Bud and Sally, I'd like to hear from you before you leave in your next report. What does education mean to you? And how do we know as a district when it's working? And before you exit, what would you like the board to know? Because that kind of input from all of the schools, from all of the administrators, I think would really benefit the board and help us as we move on next year in terms of setting goals and making decisions. So I'm hoping that perhaps it can take a little different tack for the June meeting. So those are my only comments for this evening. We'll move on to item 4.0. Approve and amend minutes. We'll begin with the minutes from April 27, and you had a second copy here on the table. So is there a motion on these minutes? Motion approved by Steve. Second by Alan. All right, any further discussion, any changes? Take a minute to look at those. Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hand. Okay, that passes unanimously. All right, we'll move on to the minutes from May 4. And that was the budget meeting, budget hearing. Is there a motion on those minutes? Motion to approve.
Approved.
Approved by Bill, second by Steve. Any discussion on those, any changes, additions? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hand. Okay, that passes. Okay, item 5.0, adjustments to the agenda. Item 1, I'd like to move the Geography B presentation up from item 9.1, and we will make it our next agenda item, so we'll make that item 5.1. Patrick, did you have any changes?
At your table tonight, we just have two additional nominations for you that could go under 13.1.
So under item 13.1, we have two more nominations. Any other changes? Okay. All right, then we'll move on to item 5.1, which is the Student Report, the Geography B presentation. I'll turn this over to Patrick.
I think Judy Mansfield is going to come up and introduce students, but Judy, as you're coming up, first of all, those students that are here tonight, I'd like to congratulate you. Thank you for representing RSU One so well in the Geography B this year. And parents, I know it's one more night out for you, so thank you for bringing me here tonight. So Judy, do you want to come up to the podium?
I'm not going to say very much. I just want to have you know, though, that we had four students from RSU One qualify for the State GeoB this year, the National Geographic B, and there were only 100 in the state. So that's a pretty good showing for RSU One, I think. I'd like to have them come up. We've got Trevor Hanna from Fisher Mitchell. Step right up, he's going to talk to you in a minute. And Lily Clifford from West Bath. I'm not doing this in any particular order, so... And Liam Scanlon from Woolwich. And Mia Garza from Bath Middle School. And this is the second time Mia has qualified for the GeoB. She qualified when she was at Fisher Mitchell. So Trevor's going to give you a little... Talk to you a little bit about how it works, and then I don't know if they have something to say or if you have questions.
So in the GeoB, the first piece of the puzzle was the classroom round, where there were seven rounds, where every kid in the fourth and fifth grades got their own multiple choice questions. They had seven. And the high scores, which usually had around six or seven right out of seven questions, they would move on to the School B. In the School B, there are multiple kids sitting at different tables. Mrs. Mansfield and Mrs. Copeland read off the questions. Most of them were not multiple choice, but it was basically two strikes, you're out there. And it was just went until there was one kid left. And that person would then move on to the written test, which was in a confined space. In my case, it was in Mrs. Copeland's room in Fisher Mitchell. And there, they would take a test. Most of them were multiple choice, a couple of them were not. And after that, the top 100 scores in that test would then move on to the State B at Yuman Farmington. And there, everybody was split into four rooms, three of which were classrooms, one of which was an auditorium. There were seven questions for each person there. Some of them were multiple choice, some of them weren't. And the highest scores there would move on to the final round in the auditorium, where they would have a chance to go to the National B in Washington DC.
They're shocked. Did they have questions for the board? People didn't ask the board, I thought. You have a question to ask the board?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought you did. Well, step up to the microphone and ask the board a question. Because I find when I'm working with these B's, I'm pretty good at geography, that's one of my favorite things in the world, but I don't know the answers to all of them, so they're pretty tough.
So this is one of the questions that stumped me, and it was, what is the highest point in Great Britain at 4,409 feet? So, yeah.
It's Ben or something, right? It's Bern Ben or something, there's two words?
Yeah.
What's the... something Ben, or Ben something?
Ben Nevis.
Well done, Steve! How do you prepare for the B? The questions are right there, if anyone wants to answer them. If you ask us a question, we can ask you one.
I guess we just studied really hard. Yeah. Once we get told that we have been to the state or anywhere, really. I know I did study really hard and looked at it good.
So let me ask you all to follow up on that. So what do you use as resource when you're studying?
Well, National Geographic, they have books. And I have two of them, so I read through those and then just have access to it, looking at maps. And that's about it.
So it's not all internet? And you're actually using an actual textbook? Good.
Maybe someone else can answer. We just have another question, but maybe someone else can answer. What was your best experience? What experience did you take away from participating?
Well, this is my second time going and that's pretty cool, I guess. Something I just kind of think about is that I answered six questions and that's something I didn't do previously. And I wasn't setting guessing myself as much as I had the first time I went. So I think it's something that I improved more.
Are there any other questions from the board? No? All right, well, thank you so much for coming in. We appreciate your presentation. All right, our next item is item 6.0, Public Session. Is there anyone from the public who would like to get up and speak? Okay, we will move on. Item 7.0, the Malt Presentation.
So this is our Autism Leadership Team, and I think maybe it was a year and a half ago, two years, three years, I have to... Long time ago, then this team came and presented, gave you an update. And so we do have, I don't know who's speaking, but Sarah Helman, I think, is going to lead this effort. But we also have Lisa Gaston right here, Nancy Riggs, Justin Kellner, obviously Sharon Brown here. So I'm not sure, I think Sarah is going to lead it off, and then we'll go from there. Sharon, maybe you'll lead up.
Ross Berkelwitz wants to be on our team, so we let him sit with us. No, he really is on the Malt Team. We're really appreciative that he's there most of the time. We're not going to let him present to you because he's mostly inappropriate. Anyway, thank you for having us again. Pat, you were right, it was last year that this team presented. In fact, we may have done the last two years. And we'll use any forum to let you know what we're doing and to promote the work that these folks do with the kids. I have some great people here tonight, some of my very best, but I think they're all very best, actually. They won't be able to stand up with those kids, I'm afraid. Sorry, guys, we never can compete with kids, but they have some good news to bring to you. Our efforts are really paying off, and the support of this board has just been exceptional. Before Sarah comes up about the Malt Team, I asked Nancy Riggs, one of our co-teachers in the Grade 3 to 8 Life Skills Program, to come up and give you just a couple of highlights this year, especially from Special Olympics, because we had some results that were really quite outstanding. If you've known some of these kids, as we have from kindergarten up, you would see the growth and the significance of the program and the new learning help provided. So Nancy, would you like to do the second?
So nearly two weeks ago, the District Life Skills Program, the Elementary Program, and the Night School Program participated in the area of Danes for track and field. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank the board, and Mr. Manuel, and Sharon for the support in the development of the Life Skills Program in Woolwich and the opportunities that that program has provided to some really unique students in our district. And I think our Day at Special Olympics really is a wonderful example of how all of that work has kind of come together for students. So that experience was pretty indescribable. I think Mr. Libby would probably attest as well as me to watch some of our students in their events. But our students were very happy, that they were engaged, that they were hopeful. We had an amazing number of families attend to watch their students, some of which I had never met. So if you think about that, I mean, they were there for their kids in a way that I had never seen before, and so it was an opportunity for us to meet some of their extended family members. We had substitutes that sat in our classroom that came to cheer on kids. And our athletes were so proud. We had students that were role models for sportsmanship, friendship, and perseverance. And I think that anyone who was there that day could see that. We had kids that were taken with pride and were given a podium to receive their winners and were cheering and crying at the same time. Students were so taken with themselves in that day. So thank you for all of that support. It was really, that Day at Special Olympics was amazing for all of the kids and the teachers and staff. And so there's some pictures and some little talking points, and then the Times directed article is attached to the back just about Special Olympics in that day. Any questions?
Hi, thanks for having us. So I'm Sarah Helman, and I'm the Malt Team Coordinator. And you may remember, I spoke with you last year. So the Malt Team has been really busy this year. We've worked on a number of projects. The first, just to refresh your memories of what the Malt Team is, it's the main Autism Leadership Team. It was created three years ago. The first two years were mostly professional development of the Malt Team members in Orono, because it was a grant-based initiative. This year, our training has ended, and we've just been left to do our own work in our districts, and that's what we've done. So we've done a lot of work this year. We had two priorities. One is to promote autism awareness, and the other one is to promote self-management plans with students on the autism spectrum. So for the first goal, promoting autism awareness, we first had to do one more school, which was Morse High, where we gave an autism awareness presentation to all of the staff. And we did all of the other schools last year. And then on April 2, it was Light It Up Blue Day, and April was National Autism Awareness Month. And we had a really great effort this year. If you walked into any school, there would be signs that says, Light It Up Blue, April 2. Here at BMS, they had a photo booth for students. I'm not exactly sure what it looked like, but it was something having to do with autism awareness, and they put on blue things and they took pictures. Several crew and advisory teams at the Morse and Bath Middle School did autism awareness activities with their students. At Morse High School, they had... Everybody was encouraged to wear blue that day. So at Morse High School alone, they counted 900 articles of clothing among students and staff for Light It Up Blue Day. We lit up the City Hall in blue. We had numerous professional development bulletin boards in staffrooms and whatnot. All staff wore autism awareness pins that day, so it was really just a great effort. And then the second piece that we did that really was the most time-consuming this year is promoting self-management plans with students with ASD or autism spectrum disorders. So if you remember, there were about... There were 36 students with an autism spectrum disorder on their IEP in our district. That's not including a few more, because there may be a few more that are multiple disabilities. That's just our first glance that I could get today. So that's probably about 40. And then we have several students with autism who either have a 504 plan or are not identified. So that probably goes up past 40 students in our district. So self-management is an evidence-based intervention for executive skills and for increasing self-regulation. So self-regulation is the ability to prioritize and think and act and actually act on our goals. So it requires all of it, from thinking about our goals to overcoming obstacles to our goals, to actually completing our goals. So that can be something as simple as completing a task in the classroom, or it can be something as complex as, you know, actually reaching a long-term goal. And there's emotional regulation and flexibility involved in all of that self-regulation. So self-management is actually taking the adult management aspect out and in having our students manage themselves. So through this self-management, they learn self-regulation. So we piloted self-management plans with several students with ASD in our district. So for example, one student was calling out a lot in class and just sort of blurbing things that weren't necessarily related to the topic of discussion in class. So we began a self-management plan with him on raising his hand and actually contributing relevant pieces to the discussion. And it was very successful. So we can sort of target positive behaviors that we want to see, like active participation, or using your coping skills when you're frustrated, if you get really frustrated easily, taking a break, taking a deep breath, those types of things. And then actually monitoring yourself. And we start by having the adult monitor, and then the adult and the student monitor together, and then the student actually does it themselves. So in order to have self-management, you have to have kind of accurate self-awareness and accurate self-reflection. And some students with ASD actually struggle with that, so some of our efforts this year have just been on increasing accurate self-reflection on some students. So we've done that, and every plan that we did this year was successful. We would, one person on our Malt Team would choose a student to develop a plan with, and they'd come back the next month and they'd be like, wow, this was amazing. So we decided to do a professional development day with all of the special education staff in March on self-management. And it was an expeditionary learning model of building background workshop model. And it was just an awesome day. Everybody said that it was really useful for them. And they said that they actually recommended it to all staff. A lot of our work this year, that's kind of been a theme for a lot of the special ed staff that we're getting back, is that this is so great, we wish that everybody in the whole school could get this. And we did give everybody autism awareness, but now we're kind of moving more into interventions, and people are just really latching on to it. So we've done other things. We went to a few different trainings, isolated people on the Malt Team, went to various executive skills trainings, because that was our priority this year. So at Woolwich Central School, for example, we're doing a get-ready-do-done model of getting work done with some of these students who struggle with work completion. And it's basically visualizing the task completion and what the product looks like, and then figuring out everything that you need to actually do it, and then doing it, versus just jumping in and doing it. Because one thing about executive skills is that you actually automatically imagine the future, the end product, and that people who struggle in executive skills are not seeing that end product. I could get into executive, I could talk about executive skills all day. Anybody who knows me is like, okay, you need to stop talking about it, because I really will talk about it all day, but anyway. Another example of what we're doing is at Morse. One of the special ed teachers there is starting to create a strategies binder for the students. Because a lot of students at Morse who have IEPs aren't necessarily in special education classrooms all day long. They move from class to class. So we're creating binders where they can... Where they have written down strategies that they can use for work completion, for transitioning, for emotional regulation, flexibility, all of these things. And they can, you know, time management, organization. We have it in a binder, and they're going to bring it to their classes so they have it, access to it all day. So they're not just getting their study strategies in their study hall, but they're actually able to use it and, you know, be independent with it throughout the day. This is kind of a lofty goal, and one of our team's goals that we're thinking about for the future is to actually have a strategies binder with every student with ASD that moves with them from school to school, because a lot of students on us that tend to have a difficult time transitioning from one school to the next because it's different people, it's different procedures, everything has changed for them. So we would really, in a perfect world, love to have strategies binders that kind of go with them so they can, to help promote independence, but also to help with the carryover of strategies from one school to the next, what works, and showing that to the next school staff. And being very specific about what specifically works, because there's lots of specific strategies that we give these students over time. So where are we going to go from here? I think that self-management plans help students with all kinds of disabilities. So, you know, if a student has ADHD, this is a very natural thing for them to have because they struggle with organization and detention. And there's lots of students with just learning differences that would really benefit from it as well. Along that thread, in all of the workshops that we've done with special ed this year, they have said that, you know, all students really benefit from... Because this is really just kind of a positive behavior support, that's one way to think of it. Sort of a, it can be a universal tier-one intervention. And so we're, as a Malt Team, we're going to be thinking about how can we make sure that just overall general tier-one behavioral interventions are really, really exist in all of our schools? Because sometimes there's, from school to school, there may be a little bit of variation. And when we're talking about ASD and then we're talking about executive skills, it's really easy to just get into behavior in general, because it just gets big, if you can understand that. And we also want to talk about directing, incorporating more direct executive skills coaching into some of the special ed design instruction that students with IEPs receive. And, you know, I think also what we would like to see is that special ed staff, I think, in general, want to see behavior as sort of a district, become a district priority for professional development. We've had various professional development initiatives that have been really, I mean, just for example, writing. And the things that I, when I walk into a classroom and the students are writing these days, it's just amazing, the changes that have come in our district in the last few years. I would really love to see behavioral interventions become a district priority when it comes to professional development, because, you know, we do have social skills, work habits, expectations on our report cards, but there's a lot of... There's not a lot of consistency as to how we teach those things and how we reinforce those things and stuff like that. So when I get feedback from the special ed staff after we do the Malt trainings, that's what we hear, is that we want, you know, we want everybody in our schools to be hearing the same thing from the same people, so... Do you have questions for us as a team about anything having to do with Malt Team or our work, or comments on what you might like to see for us for future directions?
Any questions from the board?
Sarah, when you started off, you gave a couple of numbers, and this was the first...
So there's 36 students with autism spectrum disorder as their disability on their IEP in our district. There are a few students with multiple disabilities, so it's just coded in our computer system a little differently, so it's not as easy to get. But I know that there are at least a few that have, maybe more.
Probably somewhere five.
Five and 10, yeah, who have multiple disabilities. So they may have a different disability, as well as autism on their IEP. And then we have some students with 504 plans who don't need specialized instruction, but need an accommodation plan, and they have ASD. And then there are always a few students who don't receive anything, and they may be identified.
So the numbers, I don't want to all, but the numbers you gave were cumulative numbers, 36 on the IEP?
Total in our district, yeah.
And you said something about 40, but it was actually additional five.
Yes, I think, yes.
Okay.
My guess is there's probably 45 or 50, yeah, total. Total, yeah. I'm sorry, what?
No, that's all right.
Yeah, no, there's not a hundred, no, there's total, total of 40 or 50, yeah.
You were giving a running total.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I've got a question.
Okay, I've got a question. You talk about implementing these new plans or this new strategy of self-regulation, self-management, self-reflection. And I know in your talk, you sort of addressed it. But can you summarize? Say I've got a student who's a third grader at Fisher Mitchell. How does that strategy filter down to that student? How does it get implemented to that student? From the Malt Team to the student? How many layers does it go through before it impacts that student?
Does the student have ASD? Or is it just a generalized student?
Let's say no. Just general.
So we've done a lot of trainings on executive skills. And I have, in my time in the district, have done a lot of that over the years to various general ed teachers. So if they need help in executive skills, I hope that the teacher is giving them strategies to be more successful, like work completion, let's say. It kind of depends on what the target behavior is. Let's say it's work completion. They may need more coaching upfront before the task. Like, okay, so do you have everything you need for this? Have you gone to the bathroom? Have you gotten a drink of water? Is everything out of the way? Are you ready for this? How much time do you have? Some students just have a hard time getting started. So maybe they spend 15 minutes getting started on their task, but then once they're started, they're back, they're okay. So maybe the teacher says, instead of spending 15 minutes, I'm going to set the timer, let's say this is 15 minutes. Yeah.
So you say the teacher. Are you talking about the classroom teacher or the special ed teacher?
It can be either one.
Okay, so you folks as the Malt Team have done, you talked about doing some professional development with the special ed team.
Yes.
How does that information get back to the school or the administrator? How does that information get to the classroom?
Right.
That's kind of...
So, you know, I think that we want to make sure that all of our special ed department has the same information about executive skills and can work specifically with teachers who need that when they have a student with an IEP who needs that coaching in the classroom. Or I have some special ed teachers going into the classroom to give that specific teaching to the student. Once we have that, we need to have everybody on board because the reality is that these interventions help all students. There's not a single person that can't improve their executive skills. It's something that develops over time, and it doesn't fully develop until you're in your 30s. So it's something that we can always improve on. Your question is one of our questions. How do we make sure that this is getting done all around, everywhere? I had a lofty goal as the coordinator this year to have every student with ASD with self-management plan by the end of the year. That didn't happen, but that would be my lofty goal. And any student who has executive skill difficulties in the district would have, you know, some support in those areas to help them improve and to become more independent. Because really, it does help them become more independent learners once they have those tools. The tools can be very specific. So that's why I'm saying, like, for example, for instance, right now, we have our Malt Team providing information to the special ed team, making sure that the special ed team feels competent to coach the general ed and to work with the general ed on students who, you know, need those supports.
So aside from Ross, are there any other administrators who are participating in these meetings, or are they not part of this?
No, I mean, no. But I have presented on executive skills, for example, to Diagnol in the past. So Sally Brown has heard of it. You know, there are various principals who know of it. But that's actually, one of the ideas that one of our members had is to meet with principals in the fall. As, you know, a couple of people on Malt Team, to meet with each principal and say, how can we bring executive skills into your school? And, you know, we're thinking it may not be one size fits all for every school because we want to work specifically with that principal for what works with that principal. And that is one of our ideas, yeah.
Okay. And then we... Sure. No, go right ahead. You've only got a couple of months left, so grab the mic, grab the mic, Aaron.
I think disseminating information once we define it, and then we develop some expertise with it, and then we develop practical strategies that result from that. I think dissemination from a specific team, then into the special ed staff, and then into specific schools, including administration, teachers, ed techs, everyone. I think that's a challenge. And I don't think we have a great system for that yet. I think we're working on it. In fact, I think, Sarah, that would be a great goal for the Malt Team to really begin to think strategically about, we've got this, it's formed, we've made progress, but we can't have every principal, only Ross volunteered to be on my committee. I had to let him in. And so, and, you know, you can't have everybody involved because they don't have time. So we have to disseminate. It's a great point. I don't think we can answer it thoroughly yet.
You know, I just, I think that the idea of these strategy binders and sticking with these students is really a smart idea. And I just, I was curious, you know, I've sat in on just, on the periphery, a couple of IEP meetings, or witnessed those meetings going on. Typically, people will be talking about, six or seven people in the room, about the needs of a specific student. And I'm wondering if these strategies are getting to that room when that kid is being discussed. So that was some reason for my question.
But we are talking about executive skills tonight. He's absolutely, yes, yeah, yeah, more and more, really. Yeah, yeah, we are. Because, yeah, and another thing about it is that it's really, it's really just good, best practices of teaching. And some teachers do it and don't even call it executive skills. They call it teaching. So sometimes I walk into classrooms and teachers are already doing it, and they just aren't labeling it as such. And yes, we are talking about it at IEP meetings. Sometimes students need strategies that are even more specific than what we can even fit on an IEP because maybe it's a picture. You know, a lot of these kids do need pictures and visual supports. Having their visual supports go with them from grade to grade just makes sense because then we don't have to make them again once they go to a different school. So really, just having like a cumulative file. And I think for any kid who gets any extra support, that's another one of my lofty goals, right? So anybody, that'd be great for anybody. Any accommodation or extra something.
Great. Any other questions from the board? All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. We'll move on to item 8.0, food service presentation.
Yes, now we switch from special ed and we move to food service. So we have Walter Beasley here tonight from the main Department of Education, and Ellen Beal, our food service director. And just to remind the board, this was a goal to become a little more educated on the program. And thank you to those board members that submitted some questions. And I think that Ellen and Walter are going to try to weave those into the conversation tonight.
Good evening. I'm going to give a little presentation, and then Walter will answer some questions. And I can see your questions. If I am too loud enough, loud enough, allow me now. A week or two before school starts, we transfer a direct search list of students who are receiving benefits from the state, SNAP or TENF benefits. We do a mailing to all those families. Any child living in that household will get free breakfast and lunch. First day of school, we send home free and reduced forms with each child opening day packet. They have 30 school days to fill out and submit. At that point, if they do not submit a new application, they turn to a paid status. You can make out a new form at any time during the school year if circumstances change. Periodically during the year, we remind people that you can do that. Once an application is received in my office, I have to data entry all the information on the application into Inverna Campus to see if they qualify to receive the benefits. If the form is missing information, I call home. Once the application is processed, I send home a letter of approval or denial. I'm the person responsible for menus and making sure we meet guidelines. I've given you a sample just to look at. Menus are tricky as they must work for the day and also work for the week. We do a cycle, a six-week cycle menu, which has been recommended that that helps to save you money in your purchasing. The things that we need to be concerned with as we do the menu is portion size, saturated fat, sodium levels, calories per serving and age, large quantities of fruits and vegetables, weekly portions of legumes, dark green, orange, red veggies, sati veggies, other extra amount of vegetables. Grains must be 51% a whole week. Milk must be low-fat, skim, meat and meat dogs. After making all these guidelines, after meeting all these guidelines, we need to think about what a child will eat. It's only good nutrition if the child eats it. I do be honoring for the district. We have monthly manager meetings to talk about our menus, guidelines, buildings, and much talk about the time a child has to eat. Recipe changes and updates are topics of discussion at that time. I think there are several factors that keep children from eating. One is seat time. 12 to 15 minutes is what we strive for, and kids at the end of the line get considerably less. Most kids will tell you clearly that they don't want food on the plate that they aren't willing to eat. I think for young children, our portions are a bit too large, and I think for older children and athletes, they're too small. We receive USC commodities that I order in September from a list of foods available. They're delivered once a month. Dry goods for Fisher Refrigerator and Freeze at Morse. The schools pick from a list I send them, and facilities move them once a month. Anything they need in between, I move. The schools are given a monthly menu. I run a past history report and send to the schools for the cooks to order from. The cooks make it out and get it back to me by Wednesday so I can punch the order for delivery on Thursday. I'm responsible for keeping all the equipment in working order. I write and manage grants. As director, I do monthly state reports. I do evening negotiations. I'm responsible to the district auditor as well as state reviews. I also do collection on bills and make phone calls to parents. We've made quite a bit of progress in collection in the last few years. Most of all, I see my job as a person who supports seven kitchens and 18 staff members. And I try to make it possible for them to do the job they do. As we all know, hungry kids can't learn. I'm glad to take any questions. And I want Walter to speak first, and then we'll both take questions, whatever you want to do.
Any questions from the board for Ellen? Ellen?
Looking over your menu for all the central things. All schools follow the same menu?
No. Most schools follow the same menu.
Who makes that choice? You or the cook?
Me.
There's certainly different items on here and more choices than I thought there were.
For the small schools that are struggling with time, we cut their menus for breakfast. That was part of the things that the cooks wanted to do in the kitchen, and we did that. We did that at Diet Bowl where you are. We did that at Pittsburgh, and we did that at West Side. When we cut the person, the second person at West Side and the second person at Cook Pittsburgh, that was one of the concessions.
The other problem I see is food waste, which you touched on. It seems to me that we should be able to put our heads together and come up with a system that we can save the food that's not contaminated, unsealed, unused, so that the kids that really need something can have that during the course of the day or they take home with them. I'm talking about apples and tomatoes. I'm talking about juices, I'm talking about milk. These containers have never been touched, but if they're not eaten, they're thrown. And that's...
In our older schools, we put out a bowl of food that has not been touched so people can pick it up. Food that is served in the cafeteria cannot leave the building. That's not my guideline, that's a guideline. Then the younger schools, we don't do that because we're not, it's harder to watch what we do with that food.
Always people have a couple of sets.
Any other questions from the board? I've got a couple for you.
Sure.
Okay, if I'm looking at RSU1 Elementary Lunch, what are these items, how many of the items on a menu are you or the cooks making from scratch? And how many are pre-made?
Depends on the day. We make our own puffs, stews, meatballs, things like that. We make pasta items from scratch, we do all those things. We serve chicken burgers, which are a pre-made item. We get chicken fajita from the steak, and we use a lot of that and a lot of the other.
So for instance, in the chicken fajita, are you portioning the chicken yourself or is it coming pre-portioned?
No, no, we portion it ourselves.
So you get, you know...
We get cases full of, well, strips of chicken fajita.
Okay, so you're cutting up the peppers, you're cutting up the onions.
Yes, yes.
You get a bowl.
Yes.
So like with the meatballs, are we making the meatballs?
Two times or three.
Okay. So do we have a list of things that we do make and things that we don't make? It would be beneficial for the board to see that information.
We have a list for like a menu list.
The other question I had, I just read an article in the forum, Chris Harrell. It said that in the Portland School District, 35% of their, the food that they bring in is sourced locally. What percentage in the RSU are we sourcing locally?
We don't come close to that.
What is the percentage?
It's too expensive. We do one to 10.
And why is that?
Money.
Why can they do it when we can't?
I don't know that. We have talked to several local farmers. We do all Maine apples until they run out of Maine apples. We buy tons of Maine apples. We buy a lot of root vegetables. We buy potatoes, we buy things like that. We find in the fall that a lot of things like tomatoes, we can get for almost half price than we can buy from the local farmers. And I can't pay the other for the same thing.
Sure.
So we try, we do root vegetables for Thanksgiving dinners. We do root vegetables in the fall, we're shooting the apples, things like that. But there's a limited amount of that.
So backing up, we talked about, going back to that discussion about portion sizes. And you said you feel that in the elementary schools, the portion sizes are too large, and for the appetites, they're too small. Why hasn't that changed? Is it a requirement?
Yes.
And so who is in our schools enforcing that requirement?
Every person receives a tray of one before they charge.
But I mean, what is the penalty that we would pay if we frank our portions or increase our portions?
Well, Walter's come around with a review, and you would get fined.
So how often is Walter in the school system? How often today?
Every three years.
Okay.
Well, you don't want me to cheat, do you? Maybe I don't want to be a member of that.
Walter, can you speak to that? Why is that way? If we, if we're a district, if we're a district with, you know, a percentage of free and reduced, you know, and that common sense versus guidelines that we have to follow?
What I'm going to do first, I'll give you the guidelines, the meal pack. Can everybody give in? I'm kind of a wanderer, so I'm sorry. Everybody give it, I'm kind of a wanderer, so I'm sorry. That's the meal pattern that has to be followed in order to get federal and state reimbursement. Every year, the superintendent signs an agreement saying they're gonna comply with these rules and go on. K through eight, they have to be in the program. High schools can opt out. We have three public high schools that are not in the program, Falmouth, Greeley and Marshwood, and all of them have a very, very low free and reduced count. And they're making up the difference for the free loose kids themselves that cover internally in their own budget. You talked about pulling using local product. Yeah, they use a lot of local product, but it didn't tell you part of that's milk. All right? They didn't tell you part of that's milk. How much milk are you using here in Bath? Same idea. They didn't tell you that they're three hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars in the hole with local support. So you have to look at all the pieces. They go around and the schools will tell you that will break even. There's probably seven schools in the state of Maine that break even on the food service program. Seven.
Why is that?
Why is that? Because the price of food is going up faster than reimbursement. If you take that meal pattern we just passed around to you and you take the lunch, for example, if you start from probably the bottom, you know, like milk, how much does it cost you to buy a cup of milk? Right? Forty cents, maybe thirty cents. How much does it cost you to buy a four-ounce piece of meat and put it on your plate? Fifty cents, sixty cents? Now you take those two things alone, you're at thirty, you're at ninety cents, all right? And you're gonna put a meal out for less than three dollars. And that includes your labor, your soap for the dishwasher and the propane for one of the stoves and you haven't even touched the fruit, the vegetables and the grains. So the lunch menu with this new regulation is expensive. They figure it costs you about twenty-eight cents with this new meal pattern that the federal government came out with and they gave you an extra six cents. We're finding more and more, school districts having a hard time trying to meet the meal pattern. We had Secretary Kevin McCannon and Undersecretary Jenny Thorntons come up and do a roundtable. We had twenty-four food service directors around table talking about why we're losing money. And they're gonna come up and solve the problems for us and tell us why Maine's losing money and Maine schools and how they're gonna fix it and all that stuff. All right? That was January of last year. We haven't heard anything yet. They haven't found a solution. All right? The solution is increasing revenue. We've cut our food service program so much, so much, so much. Now we're at the point if we cut anymore, we're actually gonna start hurting our program and decreasing sales. What we have to work on is increasing the participation, increasing the revenue. How can we increase the revenue? We gotta get quality food, we gotta get food that they like, we gotta have a good environment, we gotta give them time to eat it. There's all these little things that add up. If you go into any restaurant and the waitress is rude to you or the food is terrible or all the lights are off, you know, my favorite is to turn the lights off and on, keep the kids quiet. I mean, if you were in a restaurant, they did that, what would you do? You wouldn't be back again. Right? You've got a dining atmosphere and you have to have a good environment for those kids to enjoy their meal. They have to have time to eat. It's a social time. So you stop turning the lights off and tell them they can't talk. Yeah, you know, it's gonna affect the meeting, but you've got to look at the overall picture and what is enjoyable for them. This is the biggest classroom of the day. Every kid comes down to the cafeteria, everyone is here. We teach them healthy eating. Our job is not just to feed them, our job is to give them a healthy meal. The meal pattern dictates the size of the meal. Elementary has, you know, some say it has too much, some little kids say it's not enough. Americans typically overeat. Anyway, so that's, that's the meal pattern. It's changed over the last few years, it's based on science, families, that if someone's in an office, they should do this. The science was put out there, sodium is one of the next requirements is coming out. Science is coming back up on sodium, so we're not sure what's gonna happen with that requirement. But your calories has to be less than ten percent fat. We all know that now. It's not a surprise some of the requirements, eat more fruits, eat more vegetables. When you stop buying fruit and vegetables in Maine in the winter, you're watching.
So I'm gonna back up a little bit. I think the challenge that we face and that you've described and I think all school districts face is with the revenue going down and the restrictions going up, we're very limited in what we can do in terms of growing the program. But the thing you alluded to, one of the best ways to grow your program is to get more participation. So what are some things that you're seeing around the state that dynamic food service programs are doing to increase participation, getting more kids to participate in the program that we could be doing here?
Well, you probably committed, saw my van out here.
Yes, I did.
Didn't miss that.
No, we didn't.
Why is it like that? We wanna advertise and promote. You have to advertise your program, you have to promote how good it is. If you look at McDonald's plan, they don't wait for you to come to one McDonald's. They have three or four in the seat, so you can go to where it's closest to you. The same thing with the program. Take your breakfast program, you don't have to serve in the cafeteria. You can serve in the hallway, you can serve in the classroom, you can serve in the lobby. If it stays outside, take it outside and serve it. You gotta go where your audience is, you gotta go where your customers are. That is one way to increase your participation. If you put, if you do breakfast in the classroom, for example, you're gonna have some administrators and some faculty that might challenge it, how it's gonna work. My wife's a teacher, she's, you know, she teaches middle school, God bless her, couldn't teach middle school, but she says, I can let those kids sit there and eat breakfast while I'm teaching because that's the same thing they do at home while they're watching TV or studying. So she lets them eat while they're first part of the classroom. They set standards on sanitation, what they do with their spilled milk, what they do with their meal, set the standards, they meet the standards and they have no problem with it.
So talk to me about the menu in general, lunch menus in particular, I mean, that's the heart of the food service program.
The six-week cycle menu is definitely a plus. It's way to go if you get a routine of buying. If you can buy and buy, if you can buy in bulk, you get a bigger savings, of course. And your menu, your menu has to meet the needs and the wants of your students, but at the same time, you've got to be able to meet the meal pattern. So you have to be a little bit flexible with the seasons. If you can get, for example, as you talked about buying products locally, when you buy products locally, let the people know the tomato came from down the street. You'll get better response from them, right? And the better responses, the better participation, right? When participation increases, your food cost goes up and your labor doesn't. Your labor's a fixed cost. So you spread it out with more meals, right? Your menus have to look good, your meal has to look good. You have to advertise it again, advertise, advertise. You can't go off, and I've been by classrooms doing reviews and walking by classroom, I heard a teacher say one day, he says, okay, how many want your school lunch today? Put your hand up. What does that do to participation? How is the support administrative faculty? It may be great, I don't know. What's the environment when they get down? I came down and the cafeteria is bright, it's got posters, it looks good. That's a plus. It's marketing as well, quality of the meal. One thing we've taken on state is I just hired a chef and his job is going to be around the different schools and teach how to cook. Why do I say that? Because we went years ago back to prepackaged items. Why? To save money. We could open up a box or something, throw it in an oven, throw it in a tray and we're done. Now we're going back to scratch cooking, we're getting more quality food, but it's costing us a little bit of labor and unfortunately, some of the schools have taken all the equipment out, so now we're gonna remap up with new equipment to get the project done. So you've got a lot of pieces there that you're gonna work on.
So Ellen, go back to the menu. Talk to me about how you revisit the menu and when you add items or take items away. How does that process work?
We do that managers' meetings once a month and with that, we sit and discuss it. We sit and discuss what works in each school because age level changes what people will eat. Different schools can be the same age levels and in one school, the recipe will be one of their favorites and the one down the street, they won't eat it. I don't know why that is, I don't understand that. So we try to make changes for, you know, considering those things so that we can adapt again. We try to make decisions depending on what we get each month for commodities because we need to use all the commodities we receive from the state. So we keep focusing those in as they come through different every month. Lots of things, if something is something that they're not fond of and they will all tell you that it takes eighteen times for a child to accept a new recipe. Well, that's a lot of failure. You know, really. We tried a new Hawaiian vegetable roll-up that is right full of nice vegetables and it's all fresh and fresh and it costs just seven dollars downtown. Well, some of the older kids like it, some of the junior high kids like it, the little kids, it's just they can't quite, you know, I don't know if we continue to try it if it will be already or if we just need to give up on it. So those decisions, we talk about as a group, trying to get input from everybody.
Do you have different cooks that have recipes that are their specialty, something that they do well or something that they like to do a lot of?
Yes.
Example?
Well, you know, some kitchens are more, were brought up in the kitchen to be staff cooks, be home cooks. And they can do breads, they know how to do breads, they do breads comfortably, things like that, that other kitchens are not as comfortable with and don't have the time. So I think we bring new recipes in. One girl just brought in a new recipe that, that has fresh vegetables on top of her chicken and she calls it chicken bong and she's serving it in the junior high. She worked in a restaurant and people loved it, so she started, you know, I mean, things like that or what we do. And remember, we have the school garden. The middle school here has a wonderful greenhouse that supplies beautiful tomatoes and fresh green peppers. Woolwich has a greenhouse that provides heads of fresh lettuce with no chemicals that are like this. And so we utilize all that. So when we get that, and we do hang a sign on the salad bar or on the salads for a day, these were produced by you.
Yep. What are the biggest challenges you're facing in the district right now?
Money, it's always money. We've come a long way on our equipment. We've been, we've been putting money a little at a time at that and it seems to me our repair costs this year for the first time are down a little bit, not a lot, a little bit. And that's better than them going up. We look to buy new equipment when the time comes and when it's available. When Moss building is gone, we'll take what's in that kitchen and move it around like we did when we built new for Woolwich, we took the old equipment and moved it around. So we try to take advantage of what's there.
Any other questions for Ellen? I don't wanna dominate the mic here. Do the staff participate?
And...
Do they participate in the program?
Yes, some schools, I think Woolwich, there's probably, it's a little over a hundred adults every month. So they do. I think at the junior high and the high school, a lot of the adults come in and pick up ala carte. So that's not as easily, as easily kept track of as buying a full meal. So they might just come in and pick up a sandwich and nothing else like that.
Okay, sorry, Steve. Question from Walter, thank you. What, I mean, looking statewide, what drives participation more? The quality of the program or the income outreach?
Well, we should do that answer. It varies all over the state. We've been into, I reviewed a school, for example, in Southern Maine where they had two serving lines identical. Two? And they had one person's line and one person's line. All the kids, well, not a good part of the kids, all went to the right-hand line. And I'm watching saying, why are they all going to the right-hand line? Well, the person left-hand line, the person behind the line never spoke once to any kid. The right-hand line, she joked with him, she talked to him, same meal, same everything, it's just the attitude, the atmosphere of the kitchen. Other schools that have been in there, the meal choices, the quality has not been good. When we do a school review, it's hard to say the meal is good and not good because you have to really think about what the kids like because that's why we're there. We wanna know what the kids like. If you have a tasting contest and all the adults think it's great, the students think it's terrible. Another example is in a school where they had chicken nuggets, for example, and the kids weren't eating. None of them. The staff was eating what the kids weren't eating anyway and they, so we'd all talk to the kids and say, which one are the nuggets? They're too hot. I'm concerned that if not hot enough from a sanitation point of view, I'm saying, geez, you know, they should be, well, if you look at the boxes, she's got a mix of delivery, half spicy and half not spicy. The little kids did not like spicy nuggets. The other kids, upper kids liked the spicy nuggets, so not, in that case, she wasn't paying attention to what she was serving, for one, which is that whole, but, you know, different tastes, different kids, different majors, you have to really think about all those things. You know, your high school has more choices than it now, you know, they like different things.
And who should we direct our outreach to? I mean, how much, how much of the participation is driven by the parent and how much of it is a peer, is a peer interaction? Johnny goes to lunch, so I wanna go to lunch too as opposed to the parent.
Peer pressure is the biggest and of course, obviously. When you get your upgrades like high school, high school is not driven by parents. That's, that's a student has extra money in their pocket, maybe they go spend it at school, away to school or someplace else. So you have to offer them things that are their age group. You can't put high school students in the elementary cafeteria and think they'll enjoy the atmosphere and the meal. So in the high school setting, it's definitely the menu, what's off. She mentioned the fact that restaurants, restaurants have special all the time, you see them on TV. If they're running a special on ribcubes, years ago, there was a big ribcube special, right? When school lunch started to pick up ribcubes, this special went crazy because it's already been advertised by somebody else. High school's kids are used to it, it worked great. Elementary's kids are the parents, somewhat educating the parents that the meal is a nutritious meal, it's easier than putting their lunch up and the students are gonna have time to eat their lunch. Twenty-minute lunch period is standard by the state of Maine. Some say it's great, some say it's not, I think it's a little less. We talked about waste a little earlier. It was a study done nationally, part of the waste problem we had with this new menu is the fruits and vegetables, there's a lot of waste in here, kids didn't have time to eat them, right? You cannot give, participation, you can't give students oranges unless you cut them in quarters because they can't peel them and they won't take the time to eat them. You have to cut them off. So little things like that, you have to think of too. But part of the waste was, was the fact that they didn't have time to eat. Putting a no thank you table that Ellen mentioned, anything that's sealed, that's not as hazardous food, the school district has the option of having a no thank you table where they can put things out. Anything that's hazardous and unwrapped cannot be put out by the main food code. That's not education, DOD, child nutrition, that is food code, the same food code that goes to restaurants. So they want bananas on a no thank you table, that's a sealed product. Apples are not a sealed product because they eat the peel unfortunately. So those apples cannot be served to students because of cross-contamination, kids coughing and sneezing, et cetera, et cetera, especially during February food season. Ellen, I'll ask you a question. I'll ramble forever if you let me.
So when it comes to middle school and high school, when you have hot lunch and you serve, but then you have ala carte, does all of the ala carte options have to still meet the, you know, the meal requirements, nutritional requirements, or do you, do we have more flexibility? Because when you talk about revenue, obviously, some things that may entice students to provide revenue to us, whether that's, I think that's a struggle for any school, whether ice cream or cookies or whether those have to be the same requirements?
The reimbursement program measures, the old-fashioned call hot lunch, the school lunch program where certain components, every meal gets reimbursed no matter what category, food is unpaid, it's not a poverty program. Every lunch served, you get USK food, which includes canned vegetables, frozen vegetables, fresh fruit, fresh vegetables. Your ala carte program is basically a mini store or if you go into a college setting where they have different places to pick up one around, it's the same idea as that. There are restrictions on that. We are trying to be a healthy program, so there's what they call the smart snack rule and only certain items can be sold, which does limit those products. You can't serve soda, for example. You can't serve the big sugar cookies anymore. The rookie pies, because they're too high in sugar, things like that that are considered unhealthy can't be sold, not only in the school lunch program, but on the school campus. That's a campus policy, not, not just a school lunch program. That's a campus policy, not, not just a school lunch program. So there is some variety there, it does have its restrictions, there is revenue there. We're finding that more kids are moving over towards the reimbursement meal, and as a trend. When I first doing this, everybody ate reimbursement, it was halve the amount of ala carte. You know, back in the nineties, everybody did ala carte, very little reimbursement meals. Now we're going back to reimbursement meals, scratch cooking. You know, you ask how many kids have ever had a homemade roll before? And if you don't have a homemade roll at home, you can educate a kid, that tastes better than something else.
This is all federal reimbursement. Is there any supplemental state funding that goes into it?
Excuse me?
Supplemental state funding that goes into...
Supplemental funding. Right now, for the reimbursement program, we're getting federal funding, we're getting some state funding as well. The state funding is roughly maybe six cents per lunch, and state funding picks up all your reduced breakfast, so parents' mom will pay the thirty cents. But the rest is all federal money. There's roughly forty-eight million dollars that came to the state of Maine, just to reimburse the school lunch program.
What was the breakfast again?
The breakfast?
Thirty cents?
Right, for reduced breakfast, right now, you pay the breakfast, students pay a dollar or it might be, you reduce breakfast, breakfast students don't pay anything. Normally, parents would pay in thirty cents, the state picks that thirty cents up for you, and when Ellen does a claim, we just pay that thirty cents instead of coming from the parents. Because as is discussed with you before, there's a national problem with parents paying their bills. It's just huge, how many parents aren't paying their bills, and how much it's costing districts in unpaid bills to collect the money, you know, it's just huge.
Anyone else from the board? Ellen, was there anything else you wanted to add?
I've got it.
Okay, I just want to ask you one more question then. What is it that makes our program, the RSU One food program, better than programs around us? What is it that you're proud of in the district that we do, over what you see going on around you?
We've visited a lot of schools...
Could you, just because it's on TV, would like to have everyone here.
We've visited a lot of schools when we were looking to build Woolwich, and went around and looked at a lot of cafeterias, and really, I think we did certainly as well and better than most. And I think part of it is that you look around in our kitchens, and a good percentage of our staff has been here twelve, fifteen, eighteen, twenty years. They stay in our kitchens. They don't stay there because of what we pay, they stay there because they like feeding kids, and they try to do it in a healthy manner. I think they like children, they work well with children, and it shows. I think it works. We work on that, we talk about that. They're the first things children see in the morning before they go to a classroom, and they can set the pace for the day for that child. And children who come to school with no breakfast need a smiling face and a hot breakfast. And that's what we hope they get in every kitchen.
All right, great, thank you. And I hope you'll participate in the committees when we talk about the design of the new high school.
Absolutely.
That's a big, that should be a priority. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to committee reports. We'll begin with item ten point one, Morris High School Building Committee.
Just a quick update, April twenty-ninth, I think it was a couple days after our last board meeting, that we had the subcommittee meetings, we had visioning, we had site selection, and we had community relations that met. And then on the twenty-ninth, in the evening, we had our first community forum, and I think we had forty to fifty people there. You know, some of them were our old people, but there were some people that came out that night that just wanted to learn more about the project and to give their input on the project. So right now, what we have going on is we have re virtual pool and other environmental testing going on on our potential new sites in the community. And then June second is our next round of committee meetings. We'll have one at two, three, and four. Again, site selection, visioning, and community relations. And then at six PM on June second, we'll be back in Montgomery Theater, and we'll have our second community forum. And Rob Morris will make sure that that gets on Facebook, it's in the papers. We will be offering childcare that night, and hopefully some light snacks to encourage people to come out and attend. So that's a quick update. I don't know if you have any questions?
Okay, item ten point two, reapportionment committee. I'll talk about this briefly. We had a meeting a couple days ago, Dick Spencer, our attorney, showed up. As you know, the initial two proposals that we sent to the state, or if you didn't know that, had been rejected by the state because they didn't conform to the one man, one vote constitutional requirement for the state of Maine. The group had a conversation with Dick Spencer. Dick recommended a concept that he felt that he could support, and that met the needs that the committee was striving for, and that would, the distinction there is what's called a residential requirement. And ultimately, what the committee voted on was four seats that would, each seat would have a residential requirement for one of the communities. So one seat would be an Erussick seat, another would be Bath seat, another would be Phippsburg, another would be Woolwich, and then there would be three at-large seats. All of those seats would be elected by the entire population. That concept was voted on unanimously, and we've since turned that over to the offices of Drummond Woodsum to draft a letter to send to the Department of Education, or to the commissioner, and we have a deadline of June seventeenth before that letter has to go out. Any questions on that? Anything I didn't touch on? All right, we'll move on to superintendent's report.
Just a brief report. For the second consecutive year, we had a teacher at Morris High School that received Saginaw County Teacher of the Year, and last year was Eric Barney, a science teacher, and this year was Jonna Stanton, an English teacher. So now Jonna is a candidate for Maine's Teacher of the Year. It's quite a process to go through, but I believe she's excited to go through that process, and I think next fall, they will announce, you know, who is the Maine Teacher of the Year. So again, RSU One and Morris High School specifically represented very well. Just some upcoming events this week, just to remind you, if you'd like to attend, two great events. May twenty-first, at noon, we have the BRCTC Recognition and Awards Assembly, and then that evening at six, we have the Adult Ed graduation in Montgomery Theater. That's it.
Okay, for the financial report, I'll turn it over to Deborah Clark.
I hit Walter up on the way out to see if there's going to be some grant funding on school lunch equipment, so it's going to keep me posted. That's the hope. Our financial report is at the end of April. It shows that we have spent with the encumbered amount ninety-three point six percent, and this is, once again, in line with what we've expected. We've only had one reduction in the state subsidy for the Maine Care so far. I haven't heard that there'll be another one, but I'm expecting one in June. So we're, once again, doing pretty well. We have eight remaining pays that will hit this budget, and our revenue's coming in as planned. We have auditors coming to the office on Wednesday to start the process, and Peter and I are working on reviewing things that have been, we've been kind of crazy this year. This has been a learning year for us, but we're, we're on top of things, and I think we're feeling pretty good about the auditors coming Wednesday, so I think we're in good shape.
Any questions for Deborah? Do you, there's no concern that as we're getting to the close of the budget year, that the revenue just isn't coming in as quickly as the expenses are going out? We've got about eighteen, almost twenty percent remaining on revenue. We only have about six percent left in expenditures.
I'm not concerned, I think it's, like, today, I went down to the bank and deposited almost a million dollars, so, you know, once we, once we get a payment from the city of Bath, it's almost a million dollars at the time. So that will all, I think everything's coming as planned.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, I'm going to table review of board goals, unless there's something that somebody wanted to address with the goals. Okay? We'll move on to new business under personnel items. We have three action items, you have three nominations in front of you. Patrick, do you want to comment on these?
Yeah, this first one that you had in your packet is Beth Kazer, who actually is an employee of the district, has been for a while at Woolwich as a special ed teacher, now she's tutted one math for the RSU. And so you can see, we interviewed five, I mean, three people, we have five applications for a literacy specialist at Woolwich, and the nomination is for Beth Kazer, and you can see her background and her step. Do you want me to do this as a group?
Sure.
And then, as you, as you know, we have a fair amount of openings right now, mostly because of retirements in the district. So two that we wanted to bring to you tonight is an elementary teacher at Phippsburg, Sandra Brand, and Sandra, we hired in the fall of this year because we had a resignation, and has done a very nice job for us, and the interviewing committee made up of the principal and two teachers. You can see we had fifteen to twenty applicants, applicants, and we interviewed four. And then the other position is grade six humanities at Bath Middle School, and we're recommending Julia Kearns, grade six teacher. And again, you can see we had twenty applicants and interviewed five people.
Any questions for Patrick on those positions? I just have one. Remind me again, if Sandra is moving from grade four to grade two, was that the position that, there was duplication there, or do we now have an opening?
I think it's supposed to be grade, I think it's supposed to be a higher grade level. We have two openings at Phippsburg, and I just need to go back and double-check this with Sandra. But it's, I mean, it's obviously an elementary classroom teacher, I'm not sure that it's grade two, or if it would be grade four. I think it's grade four, yeah, and so we still have an opening for grade two at Phippsburg.
All right, so unless anyone has any issues, we can take this as a group of three. Is there a motion? Move to approve by Steve, second by Bill. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. None opposed? That passes. Okay, thank you. Field trip requests. Out-of-state field trip for Fisher Mitchell fifth graders to visit Boston. Any questions on that? Move to approve by Steve, second by Bill. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. Okay, that passes. Okay, item thirteen point three, vote to authorize amendments to MSMA Unemployment Compensation Declaration of Trust. Everybody understand this one? Good. Can someone explain it to me? Because I didn't. Please, one of you, because I didn't get it.
Is this, is this something that's been routine, or is this a new one?
Deb, do you want to speak to this the best you can? I know you talked with Doug about it once, but, I mean, I do know as Deb's coming up, they had their council revisit their insurance trust documents, and they've been updated, but...
Basically, they sent an email to Doug Burn, and he's my contact at Maine School Management Unemployment, they had their council review their, the language of their declarations, and they suggested, I think it's what, two change, two changes or something in there. They're just asking everybody in the state to bring it to their boards. The boards have to make a motion to accept allowing them to make this change. It's just a language thing on their end.
And whose retirement does it affect?
I, oh, it's unemployment.
Okay, whose unemployment? Is it the staff of the MSMA?
No, 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 it's a trust. MSMA has a trust that we belong to for unemployment, so we pay a percentage, and it's based upon the use of the whole unit as a, as a whole, and we pay a certain percentage for unemployment instead of paying self-insured unemployment. So that we pay a percentage based upon wages. For the first twelve thousand dollars a year in wages, we pay a certain percentage every year, based upon the whole trust. So because we belong to that, then that's, they're updating their paperwork in Augusta.
So this is the unemployment policy for the MSMA staff?
MSMA trust, the whole, the whole group of unemployment.
Are they self-insured? I'm wondering if it is that we, that essentially we're self-insured, that the MSMA runs its own...
Maine School Management runs the fund.
Runs its own fund?
Yes.
Okay.
And we contribute to, we belong to them. They handle, like, all the unemployment claims. I receive notices saying who has, who's eligible to collect unemployment, who is collecting unemployment, how much our district has paid, and then they base a rate, every year, they base a rate on what we've paid, who's drawing from our district, and that sort of thing. So it's, MSMA is a big trust throughout the whole state.
So as manager of the trust, as the manager of the trust, they're looking for authorization to take certain actions on behalf of the trust?
That's correct. And because we belong to it, they're asking us to...
To certify or approve that, that, as they said, the fund manager, which is, be allowed to make certain investments, independent of having, I guess, having to come to each district at the time of those investments? But I don't know, I don't know what the current language is, and it's essentially just a change that allows them to make, make those investments of the trust funds.
Right.
Yeah, I think, I guess, where I'm a little confused is, like, in my company, we also have unemployment that we provide for our employees. And each year, my insurance company gives me, I don't know what it's called, a mod rate, and it's based on how much we've utilized the unemployment over the course of the year, and based on how much we've utilized it, how much we pay in, is how much our unemployment rates increase. So I know a little bit about unemployment compensation, but I just, the thing that I didn't understand is, does this unemployment policy, is this applicable to our employees, or is it applicable to the staff of the MSMA? Say, the director, the secretary, the office people, those five people that run MSMA? Is this a decision that we're making that impacts those people? Or is this a decision that we're making that impacts the unemployment policy for our staff?
I believe it's a decision we're making for our staff, and therefore also the whole state, that anybody who belongs to that particular fund, that Maine School Management Unemployment Fund.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, thanks, Deborah. Okay, this is an action item. Somebody like to make a motion?
I will approve the resolution. I move to approve the resolution as submitted as by MSMA.
Move, we approve the resolution as, uh, as submitted as by the MSF, MSMA. Does it need to be read?
I don't think so. Okay, so there's a motion to approve from Steve? Is there a second? Second by Alan? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Uh, we'll open it up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak? All right, on to item fifteen point O, set next meeting dates and locations. Um, we currently have the district budget meeting Tuesday, May twenty-sixth, uh, which will be here at six PM. And, uh, we have the next regular board meeting, Monday, June twenty-second, also here at six. Any issues for folks with those dates?
Is this before or after graduation? Before. The Morris graduating, June twenty-seventh.
No, it's after.
Yeah. If that's the case, I'd just like to recognize who's been our senior representative for the last year, and we appreciate you attending the meetings and for the help that you've given us to the operations. Kara's gone on to Tufts, and she's going to get in a pre-veterinary program. We wish you the best of luck.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Kara. Thank you, Steve. All right, we now need to go into executive session, uh, for labor contract discussions. Is there a motion to move to executive session?
Sure.
Move by Bill. Second by Steve. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Okay, we're now in executive session. Okay, we're now back in general session. Um, I just need a motion to extend the meeting past eight o'clock.
Sure.
Okay, motion by Bill.
Second.
Second by Alan. All those in favor of the motion to extend board meeting past eight? Okay, that motion passes. Okay, on to item eighteen point O, to approve proposed labor contracts. This is an action item. Uh, we'll begin with item eighteen point one. Um, the Saginaw Education Association Contract. Is there a motion on that?
If I will, we ratify Saginaw Education Association Contract.
Okay, there's a motion by Steve to ratify.
I started that motion.
Second by Bill. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to ratify, raise your hand. Okay, that motion passes unanimously.
Bravo.
Thank you. Uh, item eighteen point two, this is Council Ninety-Three, the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Contract. Is there a motion on this contract?
Move to ratify.
Move to ratify by Bill.
Second.
Second by Steve. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. Okay, that contract is ratified, or that motion passes. And finally, item nineteen point O, adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Move by Alan.
Second.
Second by Steve.
Appreciate it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to adjourn? Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Yeah, it was, uh...